Thank you. Mayor Edie.
Present.
Reeve Eamon.
Present.
Counselor Kulis.
Present.
Counselor Evans. Counselor Hines.
Present.
Counselor Jamison.
Present.
Counselor Sidney. We have a quorum, your worship.
Thank you. Is there any declaration of opportunity interest in the general nature thereof? Okay, hearing none. Move on to the first item. At the minutes of the regular meeting of council held electronically on May the 26th, 2020, be adopted as printed. Mover please. Counselor Jamison, second by Counselor Hines. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor. All right. Let the communication from the Carport Ray for the township of Bonchar Valley dated May the 21st, 2020 concerning an amendment to the criminal code involving firearms regulations be received. Mover please. Counselor Evans, second by Counselor Kulis. Any questions or comments on this?
No, my screen is delayed here.
So it's, it's likely your internet service itself.
Okay.
I don't notice anyone else.
No, it's just, I put my hand up to vote on the last one and that's when it came up. Sorry, your worship.
Okay, there's no further comments on this. All in favor.
Oh, yeah. There we go again.
All right. Let the communication from the city of Bradford dated May the 28th, 2020 concerning an essential workers' day, March the 17th, be received and endorsed. Mover please. Counselor Kulis, second by Counselor Jamison. Again, any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none. All in favor. All right. Okay. The clerk Bulmer's report dated June the 5th, 2020 concerning the store hours bylaw temporary changes be received. For the Rensselaer Town Council adopt the following temporary changes to store hours by law number 20-2007 in order to provide retail business, businesses establishments more flexibility in serving its customers and the greater community during the COVID-19 pandemic. On Saturday of each week, no longer, no later than 8:00 PM and shall remain closed until at least 8:00 PM on the following Sunday. On Sunday of each week, no longer than, no later than 8:00 PM and shall remain closed until at least 5:00 PM on Monday following. Further that these temporary changes be in effect up to and including September the 6th, 2020. Mover please. Counselor Jamison, second by Counselor Hines. We want a report from Kirk Bulmer or are we all ready for this?
I'd like to hear it myself.
Want to hear the report? Okay, Kirk Bulmer, please.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Edie, members of council. As stated in my report, this came about as a result of a couple of direct requests from two of our major retailers in Renfrew seeking some changes to, temporary changes to the store hours by law. Since the pandemic started, they had requested some relief. That relief was granted under the section of the bylaw that grants promotional exceptions and they're only limited to five days for the course of the year. So essentially what the issues that they've raised and the reasoning, the rationality well around it is that because of the changing circumstances around shopping and the ability to do so, the limitations of numbers, spatial, you know, social distancing, et cetera, that they thought they would like some more time or extension on weekends to try to, you know, spread out their numbers across a longer time period, allow staff extra time to do some cleaning, et cetera. And it just eliminates some of the queuing of lines that you may have seen personally outside of some of those stores. Right now, under our store hours by law, which was passed in 2007, retail business establishments, notwithstanding certain exemptions, must close by 6:00 PM on Saturdays. They must stay closed till 10:00 AM on Sundays and then close by 6:00 PM on Sunday. The contemplated relief would allow those businesses to remain open until 8:00 PM on Saturday, be able to open at 10:00 AM on Sunday and stay open until 8:00 PM on Sunday. So if you add it all up, it's a relief of approximately six hours, two on Saturday and four on Sunday. So, and again, it's, it's brought forward as temporary. The September 6th date is significant in as much as it's the Monday of the Labor Day weekend. So it gets through the summer months essentially and the, and the last long weekend of the summer. It would have to be reviewed then and potentially during that time period, you know, council may wish to look at the store hours by law in general and just have a, have a review, seek some input. It is 13 years old and perhaps there's some permanent changes that may be, maybe desired, so.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Basically, there is no, there is no request for any changes throughout the week.
That's correct. No changes Monday through Friday. Right now, the ability for stores to open during Monday to Friday is essentially 5:00 AM until 10:00 PM each day. And so there was no, that, it's solely the weekend that they're looking for some extension of hours and, and again.
Other questions or comments?
Oh.
Hearing none. All in favor. All right. The Treasurer O'Reilly's report dated June the 5th, 2020 concerning Highway 60 Downtown Project debenture financing to be received. Mover please. Reeve Eamon, second by Counselor Hines. And ask Treasurer O'Reilly to give a report, please. I think you're on mute, Treasurer O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mayor Edie, members of council. As it states in the subject matter and recommendations report, this is strictly for information tonight. This is to give the council all the background with respect to the, the debenture process for the Highway 60 Downtown project. On the second page, it's itemized the eight different processes that have gone through and eight different times council's been involved with making decisions and recommendations along the way. The reason I'm bringing it forward now is that at the June 23rd meeting, council will have to pass a bylaw, the bylaw number 39-2020, to authorize the issuance of a debenture effective July 2nd, 2020. So the terms as outlined in my financial comment are that the principal amount is 7.1 million. The term will be 20 years, as it is. That's the term that we've used in our 10-year forecasts when it comes to road projects. Their payment frequency this time is going to be quarterly as opposed to semi-annually. This is a new option that's available through Infrastructure Ontario. It allows us to match the quarterly payments that line up pretty much with the quarterly tax installments that we collect from a cash flow perspective. The quarterly payments also save us about $19,000 in interest over the course of 20 years, just short of $1,000 a year in interest that we won't have to pay by going with payments every four months instead of six months. The actual interest rate will not be known until noon tomorrow. That's the, the interest set date, interest rate set date. If it's based on today's, today's rate was 2.2%. I don't expect it to be a whole lot of movement tomorrow, but we will receive confirmation that the mayor and I will have to sign and return before 3:00 PM tomorrow afternoon to keep this thing moving along. So that's again, for more information. The actual closing date for the issuance of the debenture will be July 2nd, as I have mentioned. To date, we have received $5 million in construction advances. So there will be an additional 2.1 million payment coming to us on the 2nd of July as well. So that'll bring us up to the total of 7.1. At the finance committee meeting in May, we discussed the possibility of rolling in a couple other projects. The Highway 60 Veterans Mor Boulevard project still has an unfinanced component and the Pond Street Phase 2 project still has an unfinanced component. I approached the Infrastructure Ontario people with respect to trying to roll those into the same, the same debenture because we were approved for up to 8.5 million. However, they are quite strict that the, the application that was submitted for this particular debenture specified Highway 60 Downtown and the funds must be used only for Highway 60 Downtown. So I have reallocated some financing items away from the Highway 60 project into the Pond Street project to increase the amount we can borrow towards Raglan and reduce the amount that eventually we have to borrow towards Pond. So in the future, perhaps in combination with the, the debt that's going to be required for the Stewart Street project, I will make sure in that application to include Veterans Mor Boulevard and Pond Street Phase 2 and roll it all into one larger debenture the next time. So again, this is for information, but if there are any questions, now is the opportunity. As I said, the intent would be to bring a, there won't be a report coming forward to council and strictly be a bylaw coming forward two weeks from today that will, will keep things rolling along with respect to this debenture. Don? You're muted, Don.
All right, Counselor Kulis.
Yeah, through you, your worship. This, the revenue statement you have here, Treasurer O'Reilly, there is just that one item that says at the bottom miscellaneous revenue from 2019 of $10,000, $10,800. Can you tell me what that is? Where'd that come from?
Through the mayor to Counselor Kulis, that is restitution that was made as a result of some damage that was done to our trees downtown and the OPP laid charges. This is the financial restitution that was made by the individual that was on camera doing that damage. Oh, great.
Reeve Eamon.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad to hear that when we move forward, we might be able to capture some of the unfinanced, some of the unfinanced projects in, in longer term, in longer term borrowing. So I'm hopeful that, you know, we can establish a practice or a, a policy or an expectation that if we have some unfinanced, when a project like this comes up, that can be rolled over into a, into a debenture that we take a look at it. And by projects, you know, I think the projects that will be rolled into the next possible application are long-term infrastructure projects. They're not a truck, they're not a computer system or something that wears out in a, in a finite amount of time. You know, I think we're looking at windows of 10, of 25 and 30 years and longer. So I, I think it makes a lot of sense to do that is to capture some of the unfinance. That gives us some flexibility within the budget moving forward in future years. So I, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're able to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Treasurer O'Reilly.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Reeve Eamon. It will also allow us an opportunity to, latter half of this year, look at those two projects and see if there is other sources of financing available to them. For example, the rolling infrastructure reserve that we've created is coming up just slightly short of what I want to require for this particular debenture. So there might be some money there that can be allocated to this without actually having to go through the formal borrowing process and in fact internally finance if we can.
Any other comments? None? All in favor? All right, thank you. At the minutes of the Parks Recreation and Facilities Committee meeting held May the 4th, 2020 be received. Mover please. Counselor Kulis, second by Counselor Evans. I'd been contacted by Counselor Sidney and I told him I would go ahead and try and give this report for him. Not a whole lot of things on here. One, two. With one thing about the flowers on the main street and they had requested that the recreation department watered the flowers and it worked out to a total cost to them to have the three, three staff hours per day, Monday to Friday. First, December the 4th, it'll carry a cost of $4,500 to the downtown BIA. That would save them hiring a student. So I think they're probably money up on that. One other thing of, well, a little bit here with the museum, we're waiting on pricing. The Matterway expansion, of course, is on the table, waiting on the grant system, et cetera. And we talked about, hopefully we had some word on the ground by now, but we haven't. There's been, where there was some talk about having a committee, the whole meeting in the month of June to have staff update council on the status. Maybe I just asked Director Hill if he has anything he'd like to say further to that.
Only comment I'd like to add is I did have a discussion with Counselor Kulis and the BIA have chosen to hire their own staff. And Mike had asked if we could, you know, store the tractor at the town hall, which we've agreed to do this year, and, you know, try and work something out for future watering and staffing in the future. But for now, we're dealing with, with the BIA and trying to assist them where we can. The only other comments that I have is the, the grant, we are, we are waiting. You know, I've spoke to a number of people across the province to see if anybody has heard anything or heard from their consultants and everybody's in a holding pattern. We've had a couple of builders contacting us, wondering what the status is. I did tell them that the rec committee had passed a motion to recommend a council that we meet in the month of June as a committee of the whole. So looking forward to setting that date and present our findings to, to council.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Director Hill's report dated June the 5th, 2020 concerning the Kojiko Millennium Trail access agreement be received. Mover please. Counselor Jamison, second by Counselor Kulis. Okay, I'll turn this over to Director Hill for a report on this.
As, as stated in the, the report, representatives of Kojiko and ourselves, the town representatives, have been meeting on this since 2018. I'm very frustrated with the, the process in the fact that we provided as a senior management team our, our comments back to Kojiko with concerns of the agreement that they forward to us, which we've included. And we felt that, you know, our, our suggestions for change were fair and reasonable. And then time passed, no response, back and forth emailing. And then Director Aslan and myself met, I believe a couple, three weeks ago, we met with representatives from Kojiko and expressed our concern and our position hadn't changed any. And it boiled down to the relocation of the line should the town wish to sell, develop or any of the above on the Millennium Trail. And to be informed by Kojiko that the cost would be bared by the town by a percentage up to a certain time of year, which are indicated in schedule, was, was very disappointing. And after the meeting, they, they provided us with comments on other situations across the province of basically what happens if the, you know, we don't support it. And at the end of the day, it was, was clear that we didn't have much option. So I'm still disappointed with the, the agreement because we, you know, we made our position known. But at the end of the day, there was not much, much option we had based on the emails that we sent and I included in the report for your review. We were hoping to have it that if there was any relocation of the line, it would be totally Kojiko's responsibility from day one to, or to pay for it being moved. But they have a formula that up to so many years, we're on the hook for a certain percentage of, of cost to that relocation. So I guess our hands are tied and that's why the report is written as it is. And I leave it for council to decide.
Any questions? Counselor Kulis.
Through you, your worship, this, this, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Hill, but this, this is a cable, a fiber optic cable, I assume, that they're laying along the trail and they want to go and they proceed, they're going to proceed to go through town with this along the Millennium Trail?
They're going a portion of Barnett Boulevard and then Millennium Trail out to Horton. That is correct.
Okay, so they've already laid it out towards Horton. You're aware of that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so they, they have not laid it within the town of Renfrew yet, have they not?
That's correct. That's what they're waiting for this agreement for, Counselor Kulis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Reeve Eamon.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, your worship. Through you to the director. My impression is, having read this, that we're not getting paid any fees for the use of our, our trail. And I'm very familiar with other trails in the county where utilities, whether it's possibly a Bell or Rogers or someone like that, makes an annual payment through a license. So I'm a little surprised that Kojiko neglected to mention that. And I would say that we might be able to provide them an example of a, an annual fee or license that they might find it necessary to consider. So I would suggest we hold this up until we have some discussion with them about them paying us an annual fee for, for going over the project, or going over our land. They do do it in other instances and I, I think if I was to, if I was to go into my filing cabinet, I might even find a copy.
Perfect.
So I'm very surprised that they didn't mention that. I, you know, in the spirit of disclosure, I think Kojiko, like a lot of people, you know, they, in their agreement, they mentioned cutting roads when they want to and we're aware that they do that and we're aware that they fix it on their own timeline and too bad if there's potholes before they get to it. So I'm a little, I'm not surprised, I guess, but I am concerned they didn't share that they, they might be able to send some revenue our way.
Can you, Reeve Eamon, can you find some?
Your worship, I will make every effort to find that in the next five minutes.
I wasn't thinking of five minutes, but that's.
I made myself a note.
Director Hill, back to you on this. How do you feel about holding off on this until we get maybe that type of information?
That's, that's no problem at all.
Okay. Does anybody else have a problem with tabling this till we get more information?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. So I'd say to Kirk Bulmer, do we, we need the motion to table this? Would that be the proper way of doing it?
A simple motion that Rensselaer Town Council set aside by law 40, 2020 at this time.
Okay, so we need a mover for that. Counselor Hines, second by Reeve Eamon. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Saves me a pile of reading. Okay, at the minutes of the Waste Management Committee meeting held, may the 8th, 2020 be received. Mover please. I'm sorry, Reeve Eamon, second by Counselor Evans. Turn over to Reeve Eamon over his report.
Thank you. I'm just rooting through my Kojiko stuff, so I'll be able to find it. Thank you. We held a meeting on, on maybe 8th and I'll draw your attention down to item 6.2, or sorry, item 6.3 on page one, where it's the compliance report. We had a pretty good, a pretty good report, but we, and we had to send back some, some comments and amendments and you'll see them in the next minutes. They primarily concerned establishing a reuse center and also the, the down, the downstream from the landfill capture of information about the, about the possible groundwater contamination, which isn't occurring at this point, but how we plan to go forward. They were suggesting that we needed to move quicker to purchase the, to purchase those rights and we were suggesting that it couldn't happen immediately, but we had a plan. So you know, you'll see that in the next series of minutes. Item number seven, the landfill report. Again, it just, it talked about what had happened since we opened, reopened. 7.2 RFQ for recycling and processing. I can tell you that the tender closes on June the 5th, which means it was last Friday, or sorry, yes, last Friday. The recycling collection contract will be awarded likely on our June 23rd meeting. All things going well with the idea that the recycling collection contract will commence on or about the first or second or third of August. So those are the soft timelines we're dealing with today unless something, you know, untoward happens with the contract. So number eight on page two, we, was the landfill reopening strategy and we heard about that at the last council meeting. It was fairly successful and remained successful. We're averaging about 122 people on a Saturday, which is the average now, has been the average previously as well. So we think we're back up and not, to my knowledge, not many or any complaints about, about the new process. Household hazardous waste depot, it opened up as well. And so that was on page three, 8.2, 8.3, our 2020 priorities. We just have those as a standing, a standing item and we'll be offering some comment probably at the end of June about which ones may end up being delayed, if any, given, you know, that we had essentially two months of non-operation and staff being preoccupied with, and not negatively, but preoccupied with COVID. The financial statement was reviewed. Drop-off bins, 8.5, again on page three. We should note that the, we've had some comments from the community about, about drop-off bins and, and people misusing them. And we had our bylaw enforcement officer go speak to one of our commercial enterprises. Subsequently, those bins have been removed. So we are examining, we are examining a model which has those drop-off bins located at the landfill site. And then, and, and, and so we're trying to work that out. So I'm in the process of taking the inventory of all the bins in town to get a sense of where they are and also at the same time get the 1-800 numbers off them, contact the people to see if we can work out some kind of a, a different arrangement for, for serving our community with that. And with that, that was all that we discussed.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Hines. You're on, you're on mute, Counselor Hines.
Kim did that to me. Kim did that to me. Okay, just in regard to page 4 of 4, at the top of the page, you're recommending that those fees for those be a one-time waiver and that's to go to the finance committee and we'll consider it and bring it back to council. Is that?
Yes, that was, that was one, I'm sorry, your worship, through you to Counselor Hines. That was. That was, that was in direct response to that one problem area, which has since been removed. They didn't take, they didn't, they didn't seem interested in, so I don't suspect it'll be going to finance because it's become a non-issue.
Okay, you don't have to do that then.
No, thank you for that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Carrie. Okay, bear with me. It resolved the Rennford Town Council direct staff to apply for a grant opportunity from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program for Asset Management Update, GIS data, risk, level of service, and strategies. Be it therefore resolved, the town of Rentru commits to conducting the following activities and proposed projects submitted to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Programs to advance our asset management program. Asset management risk and level of service training and workshops. Conduct workshops with municipal staff and council, provide training on asset management principles, risk management, and level of service. GIS updates and additional database changes. Update asset inventory GIS database, including the addition of non-core assets and provide a unified location and format for data storage across all asset classes. Asset management strategies development and reporting. Development of life cycle risk and level of service management. Strategies for all asset classes. Development of long-term strategy for asset management of all asset classes. Technical memo on stormwater infrastructure funding source. Be it further resolved, the town of Rentru commits $18,800 from its budget towards the cost of this initiative. Mover please. Counselor Evans, second by Counselor Revemo. Turn it over to Director Aslan for a report on this.
Sure, thank you very much, Mayor Edie and council. When we approved or we had council endorse the asset management related studies project, which was in the order of about $200,000, one component was applying to FCM to get a grant for $50,000 to advance the asset management initiatives. We're pretty much at level one of five in our, our scorecard when it relates to asset management activities. This project is to, is to build upon what we have and raise, raise awareness of the asset management across council, staff, and all departments and actually start using asset management a little more effectively in, in the way we set our levels of service, the way we set our infrastructure strategies. And as you see here, the project also includes non-core issues. So we're taking any asset information we have, like building condition assessments and any evaluations we have on playgrounds and we're rolling it into our asset management plan to get the best value and to, to make it as broad as we have information to support. So this, the, the intake for the FCM application has just opened up and Dylan is the lead consultant working on our project and she's spearheading the application. And this resolution is a resolution of support for the application that's required as part of the submission. So our $18,800 is already budgeted for in our project, our asset management and related studies project. So if you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them if I can.
I just.
Don's on mute.
Oh yeah, okay.
You and I were playing tag on being muted.
Yeah. I was trying to read your lips. Thank you, your worship. We don't really have a report on that right now. It's just in addition to what they're already doing. Is this just to kind of expand that? Is that my understanding?
What we did in the motion that was approved by council was we approved a series of activities and we separated out some asset management activities to the tune of 50,000 plus our 18,800 as projects that were provisional upon funding by the FCM. And with the way we wrote the report previously is that if somehow we were not successful in, in obtaining the funding, then we would likely use the modernization funds to fund that component. But since we've never applied for this $50,000 asset management grant, we're quite certain that we're going to be eligible and that we will receive the grant.
Okay, is, can you give me just an idea what date that original report is or?
Kim, do you have any ideas? It's probably been two months now. It's, was the asset management and related studies report.
Okay, okay, yeah.
So Dylan was the lead, partnered with Watson and Associates and the Ontario Clean Water Agency.
Okay, that's great. I know where it is, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay. The Director Aslan's report dated June the 3rd, 2020, concerning the purchase of a new four-wheel-drive backhoe be received. Further, the Rennford Town Council authorized the Department of Development and Works to purchase a new CAT 420 F2 high-T four-wheel-drive backhoe from Tormont Cat at a net cost after trade-in of $138,784.36 inclusive of $74.26 for attachments, a non-refundable HST. Mover please. Counselor Evans, second by Counselor Colas. I'll turn it over to Director Hill again for a report.
Aslan.
Yeah, Director Aslan will take this one. Yes, so the, thank you. The 2020 rolling stock and capital budget included a net $140,000 for the purchase of a new backhoe to replace V22. V22 is a 2007 four-wheel-drive backhoe and it has currently 9,825 hours on it. And currently, as it sits, the equipment requires about $15,000 in, in repairs to get it serviceable again if we were not to proceed with this, this report. So we did set out a tender and we received three bids, one from John Deere, one from Tormont Cat, and one from Case for a backhoe. They were very competitively priced. We did have a table in the report that sort of breaks down the bid a little more. The main difference, the CAT is a little bit more expensive machine in the base price. We have included some options that we typically include in the purchase of a backhoe. And the ones that we can afford within the budget is the multi-purpose bucket as well as the dipper thumb. So that's the, the little thumb attachment that, that attaches to the arm of the back portion of the backhoe for picking up slabs of, of concrete and then picking up different, different parts. So the main difference in the pricing was the value of the trade-in. CAT supplied a trade-in value of $30,000 and the other suppliers had a trade-in value of 21,000. So the net benefit to the town was that the Caterpillar equipment was overall the best value. The other, the other thing with the, the CAT backhoe is that it's, we currently have backhoe from a CAT backhoe, so therefore maintenance and operation is standardized around one brand, which makes things a little easier. So the backhoe accumulated the 9,800 hours over, over like a 13-year period. So, so the two backhoes are quite heavily used, both summer and winter months as well in water repairs, in sidewalk replacements, and any excavation we do, as well as a lot of winter operations. So I know in these difficult times, the question was, has been arisen, do we proceed with capital purchases? In this case, we're recommending that we do proceed. If we do not proceed with this, we'll have to execute the 15,000 or more dollars in repairs to, to get the existing machine serviceable and we would likely have a lower trade-in value after another year of operation. So we do feel that the bits presented very good value and we're recommending replacement with the Caterpillar backhoe.
Questions or comments? Counselor Hines and then Counselor Colas and then Revemo.
Just wondering where these folks are out of. Are they, is anybody local other than Case?
Ottawa is, Tormont is based out of Terry Fox Drive.
Okay.
I guess one thing I should have also added in the report was the, the delivery time is substantially different between the machines. So the CAT backhoe has a three-day delivery time for the backhoe and a 14-day delivery time for the attachments, whereas the Case machine has 150-day delivery.
Wow.
So, yeah, Caterpillar is, is known for as well, their ease in painting parts and service from, from the Caterpillar. We do have a lot of Caterpillar equipment, including our landfill equipment, our compactor and loaders, loader at the, at the garage as well.
Okay, thank you for that because I was going to ask what that meant about three backhoe, but I understand what it is now, the number of days. Thank you.
Counselor Colas.
Through you, your worship, this, the total price, and I know we discussed this earlier today in BMW meeting, but net of trade-in inclusive of the, of the attachments and non-refundable HST is 138.8 basically. And yet this report says that, that, let me just find it, the budget of 140,000 is not sufficient to include all available options. Could you clarify that, Director Aslan?
Sure. The, if you look in the, the bid summary, we've highlighted the green, the green items in the table as the options that, that we could afford within the 140,000. We did also get a quotation for options, including a hydraulic tool coupler, 48-inch forklift attachment, and 18-inch trenching bucket. But we felt we couldn't accommodate those purchases within the 140,000, so we're, we're not going to purchase the, those options that we priced at.
Okay, so then can I just add to that? Can you purchase the, first of all, do we need those attachments? Do we have them currently on the one we are using?
We do have a set of forks, but as the machines get older, the forks get older. So at some time in the next 13 years, we may have to replace, replace that.
Okay, and the, and the prices, will they, if we decided, are you budgeted for these items, say, next year or the year after, will the prices be substantially more?
Just looking across the bids, they, they're probably going to be similar for the options.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Revemo.
Yes, thank you. So I'm a fan of capacity, so I'm glad, you know, that we were getting machinery. I have the impression from your report that we have two backhoes. And so the, are they both utilized the same, the same amount, like 9,800 hours over a 13-year period? And secondly, does this have an extended boom and stuff like that? Because you mentioned waterworks, so I'm just curious, you know, in terms of applicability and, and hours. Because 9,800 hours, I, my impression is 90, like an hour is an hour. So, you know, four days a week, seven hours a day, you know, comes out to so many hours and then multiply that by 10 or whatever for 10 years. So I'm just curious, 9,800 hours doesn't seem like a lot of time unless it's rough use. So I, I get that impression. So if you could just explain a little bit about that, around that to me, please.
Yes, so certainly the, the backhoes, both, they're equipped with, with extended booms.
Okay.
And what happens is when we bring one piece of equipment in, it usually becomes the prime, you know, the, the first run machine. And, and the other backhoe kind of, you know, gets the dirtier type work. So, so they are both utilized in the winter quite extensively with snow operations. And in the summertime, one is working with the waterworks crew doing digs and repairs to sanitary water storm systems, underground digs. And the sidewalk crews are working with the, the other machines. So, so they do get fairly consistent use amongst the two machines as well, the, you know, in breakdown periods of breakdown, the, the second one is always very, very useful in, in the event of emergencies and what have you. Some, some municipalities only have one, they, they rent, they rent more equipment. They, they, a lot of municipalities don't do sidewalks as, as a, an activity. So we happen to install more sidewalks than most municipalities, so therefore, you know, more equipment required in that, in that regard. So they are, they're both very much utilized and going down to one machine would definitely affect the work program.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Is there any new or unfinished business before we go into close? Hearing none. The Rennford Town Council convened in closed session for the following matter pursuant to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001. Pursuant to section 239, 2E of the Municipal Act 2001, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipality or local board, specifically to discuss litigation matters relating to former fire chief. Mover please. Counselor Demison, second by Counselor Hines. We're now in closed session, progress. So I don't know what we, what we need a report. I guess I'll leave that up to Revemo.
Yes, thank you. I think the instruction, you know, I received from council and I would dare say Treasure O'Reilly is that we proceed with trying to resolve this issue.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, hearing none. Okay, the bylaw 41, 2020, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council corporation town to rent through at the meeting held June the 9th, 2020, be read a first time and deemed to have been read a second time. Mover please. Counselor Evans, second by Counselor Colas. The bylaw 41, 2020, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council corporation town rep for meeting held June the 9th, 2020, be read a third time and be passed. Mover please.
In deference to Andrew.
Second by Revemo. Just before we adjourn, it's something I forgot in new business. Apparently, there's going to be a demonstration in front of Town Hall on Friday to the floor of the floor about Black Lives Matter. So just, if anyone wants to attend, I believe it's from two to four and whatever, and it's, I'm not sure what it's going to entail, but it is happening. So we're now adjourned and it is 7:58. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.